Hello and welcome to the Glendale City Council Workshop. As a courtesy to others, please silence all phones. The citizens of Glendale are represented by a seven-member council. Mayor Jerry Wyers, Vice Mayor Yvonne Knack of the Barrell District, Councilmember Manny Martinez of the Choya District, Councilmember Norma Alvarez of the Ocatillo District, Councilmember Samuel Chavira of the Yucca District, Councilmember Ian Hugh of the Cactus District, and Councilmember Gary Sherwood of the Saguaro District. The purpose of this workshop is for council to review and discuss important issues, projects, and future council meeting agenda items. This meeting is a work-study session only, and it allows the council to hear input from staff. Since this is not a forum for public comment, if you would like to discuss an item on today's agenda or other issues affecting Glendale, please contact Glendale City Council members at glendaleaz.com or by calling 623-930-2000. Thank you for your interest and participation in the city of Glendale.
Good morning and welcome to the Glendale City Council Workshop Session of April 16, 2013. The meeting is called order. Please stand and remove your hats and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We do have a legal quorum here, so we'll get started. Mr. Bowers, can you please introduce our first item?
Yes, Mayor, members of the council. We're going to discuss budget proposal, and I want to make a couple of comments before I turn it over to Ms. Sherhammer. This budget proposal is framed in the context of a five-year projection with gradual steps in the direction of fiscal sustainability. We will discuss our recommendation that the city council consider adopting financial policies this year and each year with the annual budget. Some of those policies might include establishing direction for enterprise funds to general fund transfers that are commensurate with services provided. This budget takes an initial step in that direction, directing that user fees and charges be considered and updated on an annual basis. Third, that encouraging consideration that alternative service delivery possibilities be considered when quality services can be provided at a lower price. That we look at present -- we present lifecycle costing on all capital projects prior to adoption. That we adjust utility rates, consider adjusting utility rates annually based on the regional CPI. That we reinforce the existing goal to maintain a fund balance of no less than 10% of the general fund budget and other items that you might find appropriate for a financial policy to be attached to the budget. This budget includes incremental steps to increase fund balance and strengthen our fiscal position. The general fund revenue growth assumption that we make is about 3% a year over the five-year projections that you'll see. That seems reasonable and slightly conservative. Better performance will increase the pace of recovery and lower performance will slow it down. What you will not see in this budget are layoffs. The surrounding marketplace is recovering at a momentum faster than we are, and the workforce has done a remarkable job of finding ways to serve the community on very short budgets. It's now my pleasure to introduce Sheri Sherhammer, who will present this budget.
Excuse me, Mayor and council, I'm going to move down here to do the next few slides.
I just wanted to make sure I didn't have to come over and do the Heimlich, or you know, I thought you were --[261.12][261.12](laughter) Make sure you're okay.[263.12][263.12](laughter)
Yes. Okay. Good morning, Mayor and council. We have a number of topics to go through today, and I just want to briefly show those to you. Now that Mr. Bowers has completed the discussion about the financial policies, we're going to move on to the capital improvement plan and the recommendation for the secondary property tax rate. Once we complete those few slides, we'll move on to the general fund balancing plan. So we're following up on the March 27 presentation where we did present a -- not an original, a projected balancing plan for next year, and we're coming back with a revised balancing plan. Then we're going to move on to the special revenue funds, the enterprise funds. Near the end of today's presentation, Mr. Jim Brown will come to the podium to do a presentation on benefits. He has several slides covering that issue, and then at the end, we'll wrap up with the next steps, the budget calendar. So first up is the capital plan. This slide summarizes Glendale's secondary assessed valuation from 2003 and into the future. You'll see the big drop in the city's secondary assessed valuation since the peak in 2009 at $2.2 billion. Now, 2009 represents the 2006 real estate market as there's a three-year lag with assessed valuation. So the city's assessed valuation peaked in 2009 at $2.2 billion, and the low point is expected to occur next year, 2014, at just over $1 billion. That's a 52% decline since the peak in 2009. As there's a three-year lag with assessed valuation, the FY14 AV figure will represent the 2011 market. Now, the fundamental point here is the loss in revenue from the city's secondary property tax as a result of this steep decline in secondary assessed valuation. In fact, we've gone from collecting almost $30 million in secondary property tax revenue in fiscal year 2009 to about $19 million in the current year. Next year, it will drop to about $18 million. Yet, our debt service payments on general obligation bonds have not declined. A year ago, we presented to council a two-step rate increase for Glendale's secondary property tax that was based on the information available at that time. We explained that a rate increase was necessary because of the steep property devaluation we saw in the prior slide and the negative impact it had on secondary property tax revenue. I think, as you know, secondary property tax revenue is the only revenue source we have to pay debt service on general obligation bonds that were issued in prior fiscal years. Those bonds paid for projects like new parks and recreation facilities, new public safety facilities like fire stations in the EOC, flood control projects, a few road projects, et cetera. Now, with the adoption of the '13 budget back in June of 2012, council approved the first step of the two-step rate increase that we projected at that time. So in 2012, council increased the secondary property tax rate 30.5 cents. So we went from just under $1.37 to almost $1.68 in the current year. And now we're facing year two of the two-step rate increase that we projected a year ago. The good -- we do have some good news in here. The good news is that the real estate market improved during calendar year 2012. Calendar year 2012 sales will be reflected in the assessed valuation for '15 because the market has improved. We've gone from having a median value of homes around $126,000 to about $150,000. So that means, for the future, the rate increase that we projected for next year is less than what we projected a year ago. A year ago, we had projected that a second increase of 30.5 cents would be needed. In fact, an 11.62 cent increase is needed for 2014. So it's significantly less than what we projected a year ago. Now, this slide here shows what happens over five years if Glendale's secondary property tax rate increases the recommended 11.6 cents for 2014 through 2018. What I wanted to show you on here is the green bar, which is -- which is this bar, is the secondary property tax revenue. The red bar is our debt service on general obligation bonds. And then the blue bar is the fund balance in that secondary property tax fund. What this shows you is, over the life of this forecast, that revenues are exceeding -- excuse me, expenditures are exceeding revenues, with the exception out here in 2018 where it balances. And that's because we raised the rate for fiscal year 2013, and then we're recommending that you raise it again for 2014. In the next slide, I'll show you what happens if you don't raise it the second time. Now, we have this fund balance that we can't spend down, and because expenditures are exceeding revenues up until we get to 2018, you can see that we are drawing down the fund balance considerably over the years. By the time we get out here to 2017 and 2018, we're at the 10% minimum that we are required by our bond covenants. Now, this next slide shows you what happens if we do not do a rate increase for FY14. The important point here is we will violate our bond covenants beginning in FY16 if we do not raise the rate. And in fact, the fund will go negative, which makes the situation even worse. This means the city would be in violation of its bond covenants by the end of '16 because the bond covenants themselves require a minimum fund balance of secondary property tax revenue that is at least 10% of the debt service requirements. So out here in '16, our debt service is $23.6 million, so 10% of that is roughly $2.4 million. So, and we're not there if we do not raise the rate in 2014. So the fundamental point here is that leaving the rate unchanged for '14 is not fiscally responsible or viable.
Excuse me, Mayor.
Yes?
Ms. Sherhammer, could you give me that rate again for what the increase was going to be for FY14?
It would be 11.62 cents.
But what was it proposed to be last year when we were looking at it?
A year ago, the second step, we projected another 30.5 cents.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, now, we put together a slide that explains the impact on a residence. This slide shows a comparison over 20 years of the city's property tax rate and the impact on a Glendale homeowner. The simple way to look at this is, here's your two rates, okay, that make up a total property tax rate for Glendale, and here's the amount paid to the city of Glendale. The main point here is that a Glendale homeowner will pay less in '14, the $326, than he or she is currently paying, the $335. And what they would pay in '14 is almost half of what they paid at the peak when valuations were the highest. Back in 2009, they would have paid $736 based on the rate in effect at that time. So even with a rate increase in '14, they're still going to pay less. So, now, this is based on, basically, an average homeowner. I'm sure you will get a phone call from someone who won't be in this situation, but more likely than not, this is what homeowners will see. Okay, so this is the conclusion of this part of the presentation, and now I was going to move on to the general fund balancing portion. Before we go to the general fund balancing, there's a slide that we accidentally overlooked at the beginning, and I wanted to cover some of this with you. As Mr. Bowers had talked about at the beginning, he was talking about financial policies. And while we have financial policies, he's requested of staff to update and expand those financial policies to cover some issues that currently are not as thoroughly covered by our financial policies as they could. One of them is debt burden. Now, we certainly have bond covenants, which express, you know, coverage ratios that we must meet, and we do maintain those coverage ratios. However, we do not have a policy right now that identifies a limit on the portion of the general fund operating budget that could be used for debt service coverage of basically your excise-based, excise-backed bonds. Yeah, that's like your municipal property corporation bonds. What this slide shows you is currently we have outstanding debt of $1.1 billion. That's not only MPC debt, it's also general obligation bonds, water sewer bonds, transportation sales tax bonds, et cetera. The scheduled payoff for the $1.1 billion is in calendar year 2030 or later. It starts dropping off in 2030, and some of it doesn't end until the, like, 2038 or '39. Now, the portion of the $1.1 billion that is actually covered by the general fund operating budget is $500 million, almost half of the $1.1 billion. Now, in FY13, the impact on the general fund operating budget is $14.3 million in debt service, primarily for the MPC bonds. And that is after accounting for the offsetting revenue that we collect at the Westgate, at the Zanhero Development, at Tanger Outlet Mall, et cetera. This grows to 20 -- just under $30 million by 2018. Now, that 2018 -- excuse me, both the 2013 and '18 figures represent the restructured bonds, the bonds sale that was done in December where we lowered our payments for the first few years and increased our payments in latter years, even though we're still going to pay it off in the same timeframe. Currently, the MPC debt service and then the small amount of leased debt service that we have comprises about 14% of the fiscal year '14 general fund operating budget, which is around $130 million. So the goal is, and we're going to put this into these proposed financial policies, is to get it to 10% or less of the general fund operating budget. So, okay, now I'll move on to the balancing. Okay. Since the March 27 workshop, we've made a few changes that we are recommending to improve the $8 million ongoing structural operating deficit that we showed you for '14 on March 27. Instead of offering up additional expenditure reductions that would result in layoffs, as Mr. Bowers had said, and that are not really sensible given the level of staff reductions already implemented, we are recommending ongoing revenue adjustments. These ongoing revenue adjustments support ongoing expenditures over the long term and expand the diversification of our general fund revenue sources. This slide covers the revenue side. We are recommending two changes that result in an additional $6.3 million in ongoing revenue to the general fund. One changes to the indirect cost allocation that's assessed to the enterprise funds in the transportation sales tax fund. Currently, and this has been the case since the enterprise funds have been in operation, general fund departments provide essential services for the enterprise funds in the transportation sales tax fund. This is a standard practice in local government and is justified because the general fund departments provide services to those paying funds that otherwise those funds would have to procure separately if they were like a separate authority. The current allocation method that we've been using has disproportionately and negatively impacted the allocation revenue to the general fund. Meanwhile, the enterprise fund's demand for services from the general fund departments has not diminished, even though the resources that we have in the general fund departments have declined significantly, in many cases, 25% to 40%. Yet those operations that pay the cost allocation continue to receive the same level of services that they were getting before. So even though we're recommending an increase in this indirect cost allocation, it's only about $300,000 more than what they're paying in the current fiscal year, we still want to assure you that for '14, water sewer and residential sanitation collection rates will be unchanged from the current rate. So there's no change by increasing this indirect cost allocation, at least for '14. The second change we are recommending is to the primary property tax and how it's levied. In the past, the city has been focused solely on the rate, almost to the exclusion of the revenue resources that were needed to cover allowable costs. This focus on the rate only provides an incomplete picture of the financial implications of the primary property tax rate on the general fund operating budget, as well as the secondary property tax rate on the city's ability to pay its debt service for general obligation bonds. To address this situation, we're recommending that the financial policies be changed for property tax so that we budget at a level that the expenditures require on not only the secondary side but the primary side. So for the general fund operating budget, we are recommending adjusting the primary property tax to collect the allowable levy. Other cities that do this include Phoenix, Tempe, Tucson, and Goodyear, with Avondale and Scottsdale levying amounts that are just slightly under the allowable limits. The net result of these two revenue adjustments that we are recommending is an additional $6.3 million in general fund ongoing revenue. Now, remember, we started with an $8 million gap. So this goes a long way towards narrowing that gaps, and it's a significant help with diversifying the general fund's revenue sources.
Mayor?
I have a question.
Ms. Sherhammer, let's go back to the indirect revenue just before that. And you talked about the enterprise fund. How about the transportation sales tax fund? Is it also in that category?
Mayor, Councilmember Martinez, yes, that's correct. Transportation sales tax is in that category.
And they also are going to be, their costs are going to be increased?
Yes, slightly. Remember, it's only $300,000 more than what they're paying this year.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor?
Another question.
Thank you. Ms. Sherhammer, and I brought this up in the past about the primary property tax. As I said, this year was the lowest I'd paid in 17 years, which just makes no sense to me with the needs of the city. Can you just tell why we have not changed the primary property tax in the past?
The mayor and Vice Mayor Knack, the city had, under the prior council, a longstanding policy to lower the rate as much as possible. It was a policy that was adopted in the '90s and had remained in effect for a long time. Now, that was a workable approach given the increases in property valuations, but the world has changed significantly. We're no longer in that situation. So frankly, with the changed situation that we're in and the fact that property values declined almost 52%, we're recommending that we change that policy.
Well, I just, a comment. When I first came on council, we had a lot of money, and we could, you know, we didn't have to look at that. But I think I've always felt personally that we should have looked at that all along. So I'm definitely in favor of the increasing in the primary property tax. I think that that's an appropriate thing, should have been done several years ago. So just my comment, thank you.
Mayor? I have another question.
Well, just a comment related to that, though. As you mentioned, Ms. Sherhammer, when the property taxes, property values were going up, I think it was five or six years in a row that we lowered the taxes. Wasn't it correct?
Mayor, Councilmember Martinez, yes. The rate in the '90s was -- in '94, '95, it was $1.98 total. And in FY11, it was $1.59. So the council at that, the council over those years, which had changed, had lowered it significantly. But again, the world has changed. We're in a different situation. And if I may, I can go back to that one slide where I showed you the impact on a residence because we did include the primary rate change in there. So if you look out here in the '14 column, the far, this one, you'll see we're showing that the primary rate would go up to 49 cents. The secondary rate would go up to $1.79. So it'd bring our total rate to about, just under $2.29. Even with those rate increases, a homeowner is likely to pay less than what they paid in '13 and half of what they paid at the peak in 2009. And it actually shows you what happens when you're focused solely on the rate. You lose sight of the revenue that's actually being generated by it. So that's another reason why we're recommending the financial policies change regarding this issue.
Mr. Bowers, did you have something you want to say?
That just covered it right there, Mayor, thank you.
You know, and I think the council, and I can't speak for all the council, but, you know, we have to be able to adapt as we go along. And I commend the council when home values were going up, they had enough sense to lower the taxes. We're not in that position today. We have to figure out how to raise more revenues. And we have to be able to adapt and overcome, and I think that's the direction we're going right now. I like this rather than what I seen in last year, so, please continue.
I have another comment, too. Just so that the public understands that the primary property tax is limited by law, but it can be used for general fund purposes, whereas the secondary is for debt. I want the public to understand that, that there is a difference in how that money can be spent. So can you just kind of address that a little bit?
Mayor, Vice Mayor Knack, you're absolutely correct. The primary, under state statutes, can be used for general fund operating revenue. Basically, it's allowed to be used for any purpose. The secondary property tax, under state statutes, however, is quite limited. It can be used only to retire long-term debt associated with the general obligation bonds that have been issued and a few other types of bonds. It cannot be used, and is not used, for municipal property corporation debt service. So in the general obligation bonds are what build, basically, most of the public amenities in the city.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sherwood?
Going back to your comment on the enterprise funds and what they pay into the general fund for service, is that going to be stepped up over the next several years? Or do you see the, just the one bump this coming year?
Mayor, Councilmember Sherwood, we will evaluate again a year from now and see what level of services are being provided. We're anticipating that it will remain around the level we're taking it up to. There may be a slight adjustment upward, but nothing significant.
Follow-up comment. I thought I had understood that we were way below most of our sister cities in terms of what they were paying into it. And I understood that. We would probably just, we couldn't hit it up all at one time, but we'd have to step it up over a period of two or three years.
Mayor, Councilmember Sherwood, yes, we are. We have also some variations on the theme that we apply where some positions and some departments are paid by enterprise funds, but it's not a single organized system. So what we'd like to do is study that and come back to you with something that takes all of that into account. But the standard, the approximate standard, right now, ranges from 12% to 15% by and large, and that includes a recent discussion with -- and that includes a recent discussion with the West Valley Cities and my experience elsewhere. So we need to come back to you, taking into account the way we currently do some of these, position by position, and come back with a proper calculation. But I believe it will go up.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Chivira?
Mr. Bowers, I have a question for Mr. Bowers. You know what we just heard today in just a brief conversation we just had right now? How feasible would it be for us to incur automatic roll-up costs in our enterprise funds? I mean, you were speaking right now, how we had to change things a little bit.
Mayor and Councilman Chivira, I'm not sure I know what roll-up costs are.
Well, when you were speaking a little while ago, according to how things have been done in the past with the enterprise funds and how everything is separate and not really, everything religious isn't aligned, when those costs increase and they have the surplus that they usually have because they're enterprise funds, how can we identify that and roll those up to cover the other funds that are lacking?
Oh, I see. Well, going retrospectively, I don't know that there's any easy way to do that, but going forward, I think the key is to make sure that the services that are provided and the costs of those services are reasonable and appropriate, so that the general fund receives the proper financial support for the services rendered. That would probably, and I'll leave it to Ms. Sherhammer to correct me if I'm wrong, but that would probably lessen the likelihood of substantial accumulation of resources within the enterprise fund. But I think the key to that is certainly going forward to get that legitimate and honest balance between service provider and client in this sense.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Continue, please.
Okay, now we move to the expenditure side. We do recommend a few changes, which will be increases to the general fund budget for next year, offsetting a portion of the $6.3 million in additional revenue for '14 or a few expenditure adjustments. This slide covers the expenditure changes we are recommending that total about $1.7 million for the general fund. For the three funds listed in the first bullet point, we are recommending a net general fund ongoing increase of about $830,000. And this is to address additional ongoing expenses that are expected, based on information that recently became available. For example, our risk manager recently let us know that our insurance carriers that we have for some of our risk insurance, that we're looking at some significant increases in those premiums. Apparently, that's the market that's coming up, and so this is recent information, and we need to adjust for that. These other, I do want to assure you, though, that the other funds that contribute to these three funds also will pay their respective prorata share of the total increase across all funds. For example, for risk, workers' comp, and benefits, any fund that has authorized positions budgeted in them, such as water, sewer, sanitation, landfill, the designated sales tax funds, all of those will see those increases go up a little bit, too. So the funds will carry their prorata share of the overall increase. What's reflected on this slide is just the portion that affects the general fund. We also know that overall utility costs, electricity, natural gas, et cetera, are expected to increase during '14, so we are recommending an additional $850,000 for the general fund portion. Most of that impact is in the general fund. So the net change on the expenditure side is $1.7 million. Now, before I show you a slide that incorporates both these revenue changes and the expenditure changes, I just wanted you to go back to the slide we showed you on the 27th. I'm not going to go through the whole thing, because we did that on the 27th, but there were two key points that I wanted to show you on this slide. First, there's the fund balance drawdown for '14. So we go from 11.4 to 3.4. That's an $8 million drawdown. That's what we showed you back on the 27th. And this was based on, oh, what I wanted to note here, though, is the main problem we have with this $8 million drawdown, which is why we're recommending revenue adjustments, is the message that we provided to rating agencies and bond investors in November and December, when we did that bond sale, did not reflect an ongoing structural operating deficit like this does. At that time, the information we had at that time was a proposal to do $6 million of expenditure reductions this year, which would have gotten us to a balanced plan for next year, based on the information we knew at that time. However, those reductions were tabled when they were brought forward to a voting meeting to council in early January. So based on the information we had at the time, we presented the correct information to the rating agencies and the bond investors, but the situation has changed since then. So the change situation resulted in this $8 million fund balance drawdown. The second key point of this slide is the total level of reductions that are shown in the future. What this shows you is we would have to do 19 million additional reductions from FY ' '15 through FY '18 in order to address the fact that the temporary sales tax ends in FY '18. Now, what I'd like to take you to is a revised forecast that looks much better than this one, based on the revised balancing changes we talked to you. This slide covers the general, five-year general fund forecast, and it includes the recommended general fund revenue and expenditure changes we discussed with the balancing update slides. This means this revenue number, right there, includes the $6.7 million in additional ongoing revenue adjustments that we're recommending. And the expenditure side, this one, includes the additional $1.7 million in general fund expenses that we talked about. So the two fundamental points to note about this revised forecast are the following. One is your fund balance drawdown is 3.4 million. That's a significant improvement over the $8 million we showed you on the prior slide that we discussed on February, excuse me, March 27th. So while the structural operating deficit has not been addressed completely, it has been reduced, a step in the right direction for long-term recovery and a good sign for the rating agencies. It's not perfect, but it's better than what we showed on the 27th. The second piece of, the second fundamental point out of this slide that I wanted to show you is the total ongoing reductions in the yellow highlight. They were 19 million on the prior slide. Now we're down to 14.3 million. So we see two changes here, a lesson, a narrowing of the operating deficit for '14. While it's not perfect and it's not completely balanced between ongoing revenues and ongoing expenditures, it's better than what we discussed on the 27th. And then the reductions required from '15 through '18 has gone down almost $5 million. Now, those reductions, again, are because of what's going to happen out here in FY ' '18 if the sales tax sunsets as scheduled. Now, it's possible to lower that total amount of reductions even further if you move that $9.5 million of reductions earlier into '16 or '17, because this is a concept we talked about before, where the sooner you do the reductions and reduce your expenditures, it has a compounding effect, a positive compounding effect. But for right now, we're just showing the bulk of the reductions out there in '18. So if there are no questions about the revised balancing, I was going to move on to the designated sales tax funds.
Mr. Sherwood has a question.
I was somewhat remiss on bringing this up on our last meeting, but on the whole arena deal, we've had, you know, at once upon a time, we had a 15 million arena fee plugged in there, now we're showing six. I guess in the peanut gallery last year, I never realized, I never understood what the revenue was. I think we were showing, in general, 15 million cost, seven or eight million revenue for a net effect of seven or eight million loss on the arena. I think that was based on just the past three or four years of data that we had. Do you know, or do you have in front of you what the revenue projections are related to the arena?
For '14?
For '14, or I guess that would be a starting place, or '15. Yeah, '14 would be good. Because we're showing, again, we're showing the 6 million, and I think we had a half a million in there also for upkeep. So I mean, basically, I think we're showing about 6.5 million cost. And again, we don't know where that's going to settle out at.
Excuse me, Mayor and Councilmember Sherwood, I do believe I have it, I just have to find it in here.
Okay.
Mayor and Councilmember Sherwood, it looks like the revenue we're expecting in '14 from Westgate Arena, San Harrow, and Tanger totals about $8 million.
But we don't know what the breakout is for the arena itself.
The arena itself? I do not have that with me. We can get that for you and provide it later.
Well, I'm just, I guess I'm more just pointing that out, because again, this is still somewhat the elephant in the house, where we don't know how this is going to settle out. Hopefully, it will settle out by May or June, but it's, you know, it could be a big number for us, and it could skew these numbers quite a bit. Agree or not?
Uh...
Well, in terms...
I guess, pardon me, what do you mean by...
Well, that 6 million could be much higher.
Oh, yes, that's possible, yes.
And again, I don't know how realistic the numbers were, the revenue numbers were, when they were projected to be 7 or 8 million a year, based on what we were seeing over the past three or four years with a team threatening to leave at the end of every year, not getting, not getting the full revenue sources that they would probably have if they were a sound, if they were a team that was going to hang around for 10 years, you know, season tickets, sales, suite sales, sponsorships, all that, all those components. So again, that may be just a whole separate topic to be discussed here before we wrap up the whole budget session, not today, but before we enter into it. And again, we'll get more knowledge as we move towards the deadline set by Beacon Sports. So, okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Councilmember Martinez?
Thank you. Mr. Hammer, that $8 million forecast, that includes also the sales tax from Northern Crossing, right? Or does it not?
Excuse me. Mayor, Councilmember Martinez, the revenue figure includes the sales tax generated at Northern Crossing.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I'll move on to the designated sales tax funds. First up is the police sales tax fund. We're showing the police on one slide and the fire on the next slide. This slide covers only the police portion, and it's a five-year forecast that reflects an estimated beginning fund balance for the start of next year of almost $7 million. Now, I want to caution everyone that the actual amount of that fund balance, as is true with any forecasts that we're doing, could be higher than the estimated amount. It could be less, it could be right on with what we forecasted. But based on what we know today, that's what we're forecasting. We won't know the actual amount until the current fiscal year closes out. Now, this forecast shows that the police portion of the sales tax fund is fully committed for the five years shown on the slide. In fact, it shows we are planning to set an expenditure budget for next fiscal year and beyond that exceeds the projected ongoing revenue for each year. The expenditures for '14 already includes the additional costs associated with the memorandums of understanding for the police represented employees, and the same is true with the fire one that I'm going to show you. And it's also true of the general fund. All of those costs have been included. The expenditure side for '14 also assumes that all authorized positions in that police sales tax fund are fully budgeted. This is a prudent and standard budgeting practice for both the public and the private sector, because remember, when we set the budget every year, or when council adopts a budget, they're adopting the maximum expenditure level. So the alternative, which is, which I do not recommend, is to guess about which positions will be filled and vacant. And I think the resulting impact would be, we wouldn't have a good idea ahead of time what the maximum expenditure level would be, and we would be coming to you to do budget amendments about every two weeks to accommodate changes in staffing. Okay, overall, for '14, this means that the police department would draw down its fund reserves if the entire budget is spent. This may or may not occur, as is the case with any other fund. Now, this is sustainable for the next year or two because of the fund reserve level and the critical needs of the department. However, we're cautioning that if revenues don't improve by '15 above the amount that we're showing there, 13.3 million, some small level of expenditure reductions would be needed to bring the fund in balance, so ongoing expenses would not exceed ongoing revenues. Now, you can see our revenue forecast is conservative. It's entirely possible the '15 revenue could be above that amount, and as you can see, the imbalance is not huge at that point. So we would just, we would have to, I guess the bottom line here is that we will monitor the situation during '14. It's okay during '14 to draw down that fund reserve a bit, and then we'll have to see what needs to be done for '15, if any kind of expenditure reduction needs to be done or not.
I have a question for you. On the police budget, has the Super Bowl been taken into consideration, the extra expense they'll have for the Super Bowl with all the security?
Mayor and Council, no, it has not been taken into consideration yet. When we had the last Super Bowl, we had some one-time funds that were set aside that were used to offset those expenses. We're thinking that the expenses for the upcoming Super Bowl may be less, because we bought a lot of equipment for the first Super Bowl to address unique needs of the Super Bowl at that time. Much of that equipment should still be available for use. But I believe that through the manager's office, there's been an effort for those departments to start planning on what that impact would be. So at some point, we would bring back that cost to you, but currently, it's not built into the '14 budget.
Well, obviously, that's a huge concern I have, especially after what happened yesterday. I mean, our world's not getting safer with that money there. I think that we would be remiss if we're not planning on that right now.
Mayor?
Mr. Sherwood?
Ms. Sherhammer, it is true, though, that for this Super Bowl, we are able to collect the public safety portion of the sales tax in which we weren't able to back in 2008, correct?
Mayor, Councilmember Sherwood, yes, that's correct. We had a public safety sales tax, but it was only 1/10.
Right. So we probably don't have those numbers reflected in our public sales tax revenue forecast. The Super Bowl portion, we don't probably, we're not showing a bump.
That's correct.
Okay, so that, I think, Mayor might offset. I think... I think in a presentation I heard a couple of years ago that the city would be closer to breaking even than leaving the Super Bowl with a deficit, based on that little bit of sales tax that we get. Just a comment.
I think I was okay.
I have another question.
Mr. Hammer, on the police, and I have a little problem between the revenue and expenditures, the gap that's shown, and then, and then looking at the, at the fire, that's not right on either, but it's pretty close. And that kind of bothers me that we, you know, showing the expenditure gap is so much more than, than the revenues that we're forecasting. It seems, how do we adjust for that?
Mayor and Councilmember Martinez, in a situation like this, where they have, where the police portion of the sales tax, that the fund reserve is higher than what we recommend, normally, we would recommend that it be at about 10% of the annual revenue amount. So, you know, a couple million dollars in this case. Because it's higher than we're, than the minimum level we would recommend, we're saying it's okay for 14 to have a higher expenditure level than incoming revenue, because they do have some reserves that they could spend. It's very similar to what was done with the general fund. When the recession started, we had a very healthy reserve level of about $72 million. So, during the course of the recession, that was drawn down. And initially, that was okay to do, because that's often why you develop a healthy reserve, to help fund revenue shortfalls. In this case, we're showing the same elevated level of expenditures for 15 and beyond. But what I was noting is that we will have to keep a very close eye on this during 14. And if revenues do not look like they're growing very much to the level that they could support that ongoing expenditure, then we would have to do some reductions in this fund.
Okay, thank you.
And it's entirely possible, I don't know the detail of the expenditures for 14 for this portion of the police budget, but it's entirely possible that some of that expenditure level includes one-time items. They may be buying some one-time items with that fund reserve.
Okay, thank you.
The final thing I wanted to note on here was the addition of about $153,000, excuse me, $153,000 in net ongoing expenses for the draft, in the 14 budget, for the four school resource officers. Now, the reason it shows up as $300,000 right there is because, remember, we have to, we have to have the full appropriation amount in order to, like, pay the salaries and cover the expenses. About 75% of the $300,000 then would be offset by revenue coming from the schools themselves. So the net impact is $153,000, it's noted at the bottom. And the supplemental itself is on page 400 in your books. Now, if we move on to the fire side, this slide just covers the fire portion, and it's a five-year forecast that estimates a beginning fund balance for next year of about $100,000. Again, like I said, with any of these forecasts, the actual amount could be higher or lower or right on target with the estimated amount. And we aren't going to know until we get to the end of the year. Like the police sales tax forecast, the expenditures for 14 already include the additional costs associated with the MOUs for fire represented employees, just like we did on the police side and for the general fund. The expenditure side for 14 also assumes all authorized positions in the fire sales tax fund are fully budgeted. Also, just like the police sales tax forecast, this shows the fund will have an expenditure budget for 14 that exceeds the ongoing revenue projected for that year and beyond. That operating deficit would result in a drawdown of the fund reserves. But because of the very low fund reserve level on the fire side, this clearly isn't sustainable and not fiscally prudent. What this means is, we will have to watch very carefully where the revenue is coming in during the early part of next year. And if it's not coming in as expected, we will have to do some sort of budgetary adjustment, meaning some kind of expenditure reduction, so that they do not end the year with a negative fund balance. So...
I knew you were going to ask. Go ahead.
Mr. Sherhammer, in regards to the special revenue funds, I'm just a little confused, why don't they grow the same percentage as the general fund?
Mayor, Councilmember Shaver, there are a couple of things going on. One, the, the general fund has a variety of revenue sources, whereas these two sales tax fund, it's only the sales tax, period. Remember, in the general fund, we've got income tax, we have license and fee revenues, et cetera. The range of expenses in the general fund are significantly, is significantly broader than what you might see in police and fire. I mean, police and fire have very, you know, their operations do not range from something like the kind of services that human resources or financial services or parks and recreation provide, all of which are in the general fund. Police and fire are, you know, their, their type of expenditures are, are, just, it's a narrower range of type of expenditures. So that's part of it. I know in the police sales tax fund, the time it takes to actually test, recruit, and get someone who can pass all the tests through the process, which I believe is less than 20% of all applicants, can be lengthy, and it has to be timed with when they can go to the police academy. On the fire side, they also have a lengthy recruitment process, but just have been more successful in keeping fully staffed.
Okay, Mr. Sher, I'm just a little confused, because the question that I asked is, in regards to the special revenue funds, why don't they grow the same percentage as the general fund, general funds? And I was speaking in general, and I'm a little confused when you're referring back to, you know, police and fire, you know, being hired in the testing process. I'm speaking about the fund in general.
Mayor and Councilmember Shaver, are you talking about the fund reserves or the revenue?
The revenue.
The revenue differs from the general fund because it's a narrower, narrower, in the general fund, you have a lot more revenue sources that are coming in, it's not just sales tax. So there are other things that are affecting the general, general fund revenue. In the police and fire sales tax, it's only the sales tax. And remember that 80% of the overall half-cent sales tax for police and fire does not include food that's sold at the grocery store. In the general fund, the whole sales tax there includes food that's sold at the grocery stores. That's a big help to the general fund, because regardless of what the economy is doing, people still have to buy groceries. And so that's a more stable portion of the, of the sales tax that the general fund has that the public safety sales tax does not have.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, for this slide, I'm going to step away, and Ms. Kathy Colbath, the acting director of the Transportation Department, will take you through this slide. Actually, I'm going to go sit down.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
This slide shows the funding for the Glendale onboard, better known as the GO Transportation Program. The GO program is mandated to maintain a 25-year balanced budget program. This slide is a five-year snapshot of the first five years of that program. Every dollar in the program is allocated for projects that are contained within that 25-year program. The program includes funding for operating and capital projects as well as the debt service. The GO program bonds for capital projects such as Northern Parkway, and needs to ensure that the debt ratio is maintained throughout the 25-year plan. Looking at the slide, you can see that the projected revenues and transfers in, and the revenues include the half-cent sales tax approved by the voters in 2001. This sales tax, as Ms. Sherhammer was explaining a little bit earlier, does include food sales tax as well as sales in the sports and entertainment district, which is somewhat different than some of the other sales tax funds. In addition, $900,000 is transferred from the general fund, as well as lottery funds which are received from the state, which can only be used for transit purposes. As I mentioned, the program does bond for capital projects as needed. Fiscal year 14 does anticipate the need to bond for $15 million for large projects such as the Northern Parkway and pavement management. The debt service to repay these bonds is shown on the debt service line at $9.4 million, which includes $7.3 million for current debt payment, $1 million for HERF debt repayment, and $1.1 million for the new bond debt. The expenditures line shows the cost of operations such as transit and traffic management programs. It's important to note that bond funds cannot be used for operating costs. Capital projects, particularly our larger projects, do not follow fiscal year cycles, so it's not typical that these funds that are allocated in year are actually spent completely in that year. Therefore, there are carryovers for capital projects. You'll see a carryover of approximately $21 million, which is shown on the CIP carryover line. We have approximately 45 CIP projects currently underway. The new CIP funding line shows what is programmed for the new CIP coming up, which is that $8.8 million. The last line shows the ending balance, and as I mentioned previously, all the funds in the 25-year GO program are actually allocated to projects. This shows the funds that are not expected to be expended in this year, but are currently programmed to be spent in subsequent fiscal years. Not all capital projects are paid for using bonding, they are paid for with cash as it is available for some of our smaller projects. In both fiscal years 15 and 16, you'll see that we do plan to use some of the balance that is shown for this year. And finally, transportation will be conducting our three-year audit, which is done every three years. It is both a financial and performance-based audit. The estimated cost for that is about $250,000, and that is programmed in the expenditures for fiscal year 14. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any and none.
Mayor and Council, next up is the highway user revenue fee, fund and pavement management, and Mr. Stuart Kent, executive director of Public Works, will talk about that with you. Just to give you an update, you'll, you will see that we are recommending some supplementals for this fund, and that's because that revenue source has improved. We did reductions during the recession because the, the allocation from the state had declined for a variety of reasons. And while the revenue has improved in the current year and is expected to improve a little more next fiscal year, we're not at the level we used to be before the recession, but it's better than it was. So, I'll turn it over to Mr. Kent to cover this slide and the following slide.
Thank you, Ms. Sherhammer, good morning, Mayor and Council. As Ms. Sherhammer indicated, the supplementals that are included, that are here, are also detailed in your books on page 376 through 397. In summary, some of the key highlights includes an infusion of additional $3 million for pavement management resources for next fiscal year. That is in addition to the $2 million that we'll be getting from GO. So we'll essentially more than double our pavement management activities as a part of this for next fiscal year. That is the majority of that $4 million of one-time money, $3 million is the pavement management money. The majority of the remainder of this, of the descriptions listed here include maintenance activities, some of which have historically not always been funded out of HERF and are being enhanced, or areas that have always had some HERF funding but are being improved. Some of the key issues include the installation of a traffic signal near 59th and Hayward. It includes signs and markings and streetlight management, not only covering such things as electricity to power the street poles, but also an improved program for replacement of streetlight poles to make sure they're safer and having a regular programmed effort as opposed to waiting and doing that more proactively. Do you want to go to the next slide, Sherri? As Ms. Sherhammer indicated, and as we've done with each of the, of the major funds, the next slide sort of summarizes the HERF plan over the next five years. It includes the expenditures, both one-time and ongoing, that were in the previous slide, and also shows down, or shows a steady and regular drawdown of the existing fund balance. As Ms. Sherhammer mentioned earlier, we have a relatively healthy fund balance in HERF, and this plan will bring it down to still being healthy and be within a financially prudent method, but will allow us to use some of those dollars for both one-time and ongoing supplementals that are HERF-specific. As we've talked with council in the past, HERF is very specific to the types of funds, expenditures you can use, and where all of the expenditures are included within those parameters. If, if there's no questions, I'll ask Ms. Sherhammer to move forward, and we'll next begin a conversation of the enterprise. Oh.
I have a question here.
Question there.
Question here, and then I have a question.
Okay.
I am really thrilled about the $3 million for pavement management. That's really good news, really good news, because the $2 million doesn't go very far. So, and we get calls all the time about streets, so I think that's so important for our citizens. And the traffic signal at Hayward, that's the one south of Walmart, or the street that's just south of Walmart off...
Mayor, Vice Mayor, that's correct, yes.
...south of Northern. And so, traffic engineering did a study, I'm sure, to, that, that's really, I'm really in favor of that one, too, since I drive up, that's very busy right there. So, that's very good. I just want to thank you.
I had nothing to do with that one, but thank you.
I know, but thank you anyway.
Councilmember Martinez.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Kent, with, with the drawdown of the beginning balances, does this mean there's going to be more monies going into the pavement management program? I know you have a plan, I forget, this is three or five year. Is that being updated to reflect this, or what's going to be the result?
Yes, that's an excellent question. Councilmember Martinez, or Mayor Councilmember Martinez, there are two things going on here. One references the $3 million next fiscal year that's being infused in the one-type supplementals. The next component is, and I'll point to the last two lines on the slide here, see if I can use Ms. Sherhammer's brilliance, in these categories, in these categories of existing debt service and new debt service, that are, there are currently, HERF revenues are currently paying to bond issuances that occurred, I believe, in 2004 and 2006. And that's right. And so that existing debt service is the line where it talks about 4.7 million going to 2 million, going to 2 million. As that debt falls away, as it's paid off, it gives us new capacity to do new debt service. And our plan is to do a bond issuance in 2015 for potentially as much as $25 million, I believe, $25 million.
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight million dollars, I'm sorry, thank you, $28 million that would then, this would then be new debt service payment, and we could do then a, a much more significant infusion, dealing with not only the residential streets, but the arterial streets as well.
Good news. Thank you.
Answered my question.
Okay.
I guess.
Okay, next we move on to the enterprise funds, and Mr. Kent will cover this slide, sanitation and landfill combined.
Thank you, Ms. Sherhammer. Mayor and Council, for the purpose of our discussion today, we've combined the sanitation and landfill enterprise funds together on this one sheet. They are separate funds, but we've combined them together since the, in the end, the, what the residents are really seeing is the $16.30 a month fee that they pay on their bill. As Ms. Sherhammer referenced, we're not recommending any rate increases to the residential sanitation rate of 16.30 per household per month. This slide also shows fund reserves steadily drawing down over the five-year period. That's primarily due to capital plan that includes replacement, not only of, of existing equipment that happens routinely, garbage trucks and landfill equipment, but also includes the closure of the south half of the landfill that's anticipated in 2016 as well... the closure of the south half of the landfill that's anticipated in 2016, as well as the development of the north area that will start with excavation activities in 2014. So, you'll see--
That's Mount Glendale you're talking about, right?
That's Mount Glendale, yes, Mayor, that's correct. But the capital projects there, particularly in the first three years where you see $10.5 million, $11.1, and $18.6, that's where those, that's where those numbers go up. And as a result, we start seeing a steady drawdown of fund balances, while debt finance much of that activity.
Okay, next up is the Water Services Five-Year Forecast, and Mr. Craig Johnson, Executive Director of the Water Services Department, will come to the podium to discuss this one.
Thank you, Ms. Sherhammer. Good morning, Mayor, members of council. Every year, the Water Services Department conducts a comprehensive rate analysis on our operating and capital improvement programs. As an enterprise fund, the Water Services Department provides all of its services and covers all of its operational costs through the revenue we gain through our water and sewer bills and development impact fees. As a large, complex department, financial planning is key in meeting all of our regulatory requirements and providing services expected by our citizens, and doing so within the budget that we've got set up. If revenue projections remain flat for the next five years, as you can see here, we'll be projecting about $78.7 million annually. The revenue previously in 2011, it was actually going down. Since 2012, it steadied off. And so, what we're seeing here over the last year or so is that it's leveled off, so we're going to maintain at a level, and we're not going to project any increases in our revenue. And this is a more conservative approach for doing our budget. In FY14, our operating maintenance expenditures are anticipated to be around $48.5 million, and our CIP expenditures are $17.5 million. Our plan is to use our fund balance, pay-as-you-go cash to pay for our capital projects. We have, as you can see, a healthy fund balance right now, and we would like to pay cash for most of that because we don't have to incur any more debt. So, that would be, that's one of the tools in our toolbox to make sure that we maintain our debt service ratio and are able to maintain a stable budget for the department. As with this year and every year, we do a comprehensive rate analysis and determine what our rate structure needs to be to support ongoing operations, including responding to emergencies and any large main breaks or unforeseen expenditures that we have. That's why you see at the bottom there, the minimum contingency we have is $14.2 million, and that's basically made up of sixty days, excuse me, 90 days of water operations and 60 days of sewer operations, and then $4 million for any water line or sewer line emergency replacements. So, we want to maintain that so we can make sure we maintain the infrastructure for the citizens. Now, as you can see, in fiscal year 17, our minimum contingency now exceeds our ending balance. So, in this next year, we will be doing a comprehensive review of our rate structure. We have a new financial consultant onboard now. We just met with him one time. And then, we'll be looking at '15 through '18 to see where, what adjustments we need to make, and looking at all the tools in our toolbox, whether we refinance some of our bonding, or sell off some of our bonds, use our cash, and come up with the best efficient way to maintain our debt service ratio and maintain support for the citizens. That concludes my presentation. I'll be ready to answer any questions.
Mayor.
Sherwood.
So, are you somewhat putting us on alert for those two years, '17 and '18, or are you comfortable that you may get around that with some of the reviews that you're going to be having?
You're talking about rate increases?
Yeah.
Okay. Mayor, Councilmember Sherwood, we do this comprehensive evaluation every year, and we're going to start that just right after the summer, and we'll be coming back to you after that analysis to give you a good feel for where we're going to stand for FY15 and beyond.
And then, another comment. How realistic, then, is the capital projects of $3.1 million out in '18? I mean, is that, is that somewhat to balance? Or, I mean, you're spending at a pretty good rate, and you're, you drop significantly.
Right. Mayor, Councilmember Sherwood, that is forecasted in that year, but again, when I take a look at where we are financially and what we need for bonding and what we need for infrastructure maintenance, we readjust that every year. So, that's our plan for now, but that's five years out, and we will be looking at what our priorities are every year, and we make adjustments and move where we think our priorities are needed.
Is that fairly typical on a fifth year out, to look at a low number?
Well, Mayor, Councilmember Sherwood, that's typically for us, because we have the projects that we have set aside for now with the highest priority in these early years, and then, as they get lower priority, we move them out, then we reprioritize them every year and bring them forward.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, next we move to the last portion of our presentation today. First up is a benefits discussion by Jim Brown, who's, excuse me, Mr. Jim Brown, who's the interim acting, excuse me, interim HR Risk Manager, and he'll take you through several slides, and then we have a few ending slides.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'd like to go over our benefits planning for you as we go into the new fiscal year. And as we start off, I'd just like to reiterate that the City of Glendale is a self-insured medical, has a self-insured medical benefits plan. And what that means is that the city, along with employees and retirees, contribute to a benefits fund in order to pay the incurred medical claims and costs that are associated with our health care. Currently, Blue Cross is the plan administrator, and through Blue Cross, we receive discounts on our medical claims. We use their network of providers, and they pay our claims, they administer the payment of our claims, and provide actuarial information to us regarding our plan. And as I go through this, as you can see, the City of Glendale entered into a service agreement with Blue Cross July 1 of 2008, and that service agreement was for one year with the option to renew of up to five. And we're currently in that fifth year. Premium rates from fiscal year 2009 to current have remained unchanged for both the employee and for the city. However, as you can imagine and as you know, the cost of health care certainly has increased, and our claims have increased as well. And the reason that there weren't increases in those premiums over the last five years or so, certainly, one of the big reasons was the employee furloughs. So, there was not a desire to increase premiums, certainly because of that. For fiscal year 14, we do have a service agreement extension with Blue Cross that we're going to be bringing next Tuesday to the council. There'll be no changes in the current plan for our existing medical care. However, there will be a recommendation for increasing premiums for both employee and the city, as that's necessary to be able to sustain our medical plan as we go forward.
Question, Mayor.
Question?
Yes.
Question is, see, we're doing an extension. We don't have to go out for an RFP for this?
We will have to go out for an RFP, but if we have an extension through the council, then we can go another year with Blue Cross. And the plan then would be to do an RFP, to begin that process this summer with our Total Compensation Committee and with our Employee Committee and Management, and then bring that to you, and take a look at some other options that we might have for health care as we go forward.
Okay, thank you.
This slide shows, basically, it shows our expenditures and our revenues that are associated with our benefits claims and payments and fund. And as you can see by this chart, with the exception of 2008, expenditures exceeded the revenue through 2013, or through 2012, excuse me. And the last four years have been significantly, well, fairly high claims, with fiscal year 12 being very significant in terms of high claims. And you can see that it's at $21.4 million in terms of what's being paid out of that fund. And as you see, over the course of this chart, you can see the deficit that we were running from year to year. Now, that amount would have been drawing down our benefits fund over the last five And basically, what Blue Cross does for us each year is, they do have an actuarial look at our previous claims experience, and they project what our future claims might be. And based on the information that they come up with, they give us an estimate of what we should be setting our premiums at. And what the actuarial sets is they set an expected and a maximum premium recommendation. The expected premium would be a projection of where we would expect the claims to come in, in a fiscal year, and the maximum is what we might expect in a bad claims year. And what I've done here is I've just given you an average of, a five-year average of what the actuarial recommended premium should have been, and then, the five-year average of what the city actually charged in premiums. And the difference, you can see to the far right, and I just took a snapshot here of an HMO plan, and showed you on average, year after year, the difference between what actuarial said should have been charged in premiums and what was actually charged. And as you can see, it's not a huge difference in the employee side, but when we look at the retiree recommendations and what we set the premiums at, there is a fairly significant difference. And as we get into heavier claims years, such as fiscal year 12 and currently, we're in a very heavy claims year this year, so we expect claims to meet or exceed what our claims were for this last fiscal year. The actuaries will take that into consideration and then project what premiums need to be for fiscal year 14, which is what I'll be showing you here in just a minute.
Mayor.
Question here.
These are monthly premiums.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, connect, yes.
It's not stated. I think, I just wanted to make sure. I don't see--
Yeah, yes, I apologize. Yes, those, these are monthly, just monthly premiums that would be assessed over the course of a year.
Mayor.
Mayor.
We'll clarify that. You're not, you're not going to have a $386 increase in a monthly payment on a retiree family, are you?
Well, as we get into the premiums for retirees, the premium rates have been significantly under what the costs have been for the retirees. So, we will need to take a look at that. And what I'll show you is, as we go through these slides, is even if we brought the retiree rates up to what the employees are recommended to pay, it's still very significant. It's very high.
But that is per month. That's the difference.
That is per month.
That's huge.
That is very large.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. Mr. Sherwood.
Mr. Brown, what are the, what is the reserve fund running now, and what should it run on average?
Mayor and Councilmember Sherwood, the reserve fund, I would recommend, we would recommend the reserve fund be around six months' worth of claims that we would keep in the reserves. We have run that high in the past, but currently, we are going month to month in terms of our benefits fund. So, at any given time, it could be below, it could be negative, depending on when the premiums are deposited into the fund and when the claims are paid out.
So, you're looking at about, right around $10 million here, $10 million to cover that six months?
I would say approximately, we've had in the past approximately $6 million in that fund, and that would be a reasonable amount for us to maintain.
If I may, Mayor and Council, what's not included in what Jim is talking about, excuse me, what Mr. Brown was talking about is, I believe we have a million to $2 million on deposit with Blue Cross Blue Shield also.
We do. Thank you, Ms. Sherhammer. We do have approximately a month's worth of claims on deposit with Blue Cross at this point.
As a bond type, like an insurance bond or--
Similar to that, it's something that they would hold there for us, and we do get a discount for placing those, that amount with them upfront. So, we do have one month's of claim that is with Blue Cross at this point, but that's not reflected in our benefits fund balance.
So, I'm sorry, just to follow up then. So, you're looking at the chart you'd previously, the previous chart. You're 18, 19, you know, you're in that $17 to $20, $21 million a year in revenue and benefits, I'm sorry, revenue and expenditures, so $6 million, you weren't even coming close to the six-month reserve.
Well, and that's, we would have to calculate what that is, but it would, it's been $6 million in the past, and I would recommend at least that amount, but certainly, it can be higher.
And the actuary, and you give that information to the actuary in terms of what you want to carry to figure?
They don't typically look at our fund balance. What they look is, at it as, what they look at, apologize, is what we should set the premium rates at to offset the claims that are being incurred.
And then, on top of that, then, you would have to add in if you were running low to that.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Martinez.
Vice Mayor. Mr. Brown, going back to the first chart there, that $3.9 million, those are the claims that exceeded the money that came in. Is that correct? Did I understand that correct?
Those would be, those would be a combination of, the $21.4 million in the red are total expenditures that are associated with our medical plan, and that can be the fees that are, that we pay to Blue Cross for administering the plan, claims, all of those types of things.
But what came in was the $17.5? Am I reading that correct?
For fiscal year 12, that is correct, in revenue.
And so, the deficit was $3.9, right? Seems like we should be, you know, adjusting the premiums right away.
Mayor, Councilmember Martinez, that's, that's been, that's been part of the issue, yes.
Okay, okay, just to be sure I got that right. Thank you.
Mayor.
Yes.
The employee benefits fund, say, last year at this time, how much money was in that fund?
I don't have those numbers with me. I'm not sure if--
Mayor and Council, we don't have anything with us that would tell us what it was at the end of last year, but we can get that information for you.
Yeah, I would just be curious, as compared to what's in there now.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, connect, we'll get that information, and it requires going back to someone, Diane, excuse me, Ms. Gokee, will go back to the office and check it, and then, we'll be able to provide it for you.
Thank you.
If we could--
Oh, go to the next one? Yes.
Let's go past. And as you can see by this slide, it reflects the growth of our retiree base in our existing plan, and the retiree annual claims costs are significantly higher than active employee claims cost. And what we see here is the number of retirees in the plan continues to rise over the last five years, and our active employee group becomes smaller. And this was taken as a snapshot at the beginning of this plan year. However, our retirees have grown since then, as have our employee, active employee basis has shrunk. So, the higher claims are coming certainly from retirees, and that does impact the plan fairly significantly.
Mayor.
Yes.
Mr. Brown, do you have a projection on what that balance is going to be in the next five years, you know, active versus retired?
We, over this five years, we've been adding approximately 25 or so retirees per year, so we could project that out. You know, and I don't have that exact number, but that's, that's what we've been running. So--
I'd kind of like to see that, too.
Okay, sure.
Thank you.
Okay.
Go to the next one.
Okay.
As we move into the fiscal year, to the new fiscal year, and as we continue with this existing plan, what we're recommending here is that we move to three-tier rates. In the past, we've had two tiers. We've had employee and employee plus family. There are employee plus one, or employee and spouse that are, you know, they've been on the employee plus family. So, separating that out creates a cost relief for those who just have one additional on their plan. And so, the recommendation, as we move into the next fiscal year, would be to adjust the rates as you see here. And at the top, this is for active employees, and at the top, what you see is the PPO plan-- And at the top, this is for active employees, and at the top, what you see is the PPO plan. We have employee contributions and city contributions, and those are represented, as you can see up there. Employee contributions would be at 7214 for a PPO, and the city would be 40878. And in the middle column, you can see what the existing premium amounts are from 1213, from this fiscal year, and have been for the last five years. And then on the far-right column, you can see what the difference in premiums are. And as you can see, as we move to the employee plus one tier, as we add that, there's actually, there'll be a little less premium that employees in that tier will pay as we move into the new fiscal year.
Again, these are, I'm sorry, Mayor, again, these are monthly?
These are monthly, yes. And as we move into, as we discussed earlier, the retiree rates are the most dramatic, and based on the actuarial information, again, we would, we would recommend at least increasing them up to what the employees would pay. And one of the, and so, these premiums reflect the employee premiums, and how that would impact our retirees if these were enacted. And you can see it's very, very significant. If we could go to the next slide.
Can you give me, what's the percentage of the increase?
It depends on the plan, but essentially, for employees, as you can see, for employee plus one, it would be over 30%, 35% increase.
Okay, I, I'm sorry, that's atrocious. It really is atrocious. I, I think, you know, we held some responsibility in the last few years. We should have been incrementally increasing this cost. And now, to hit them, the employees with this huge, or even retirees, I think is just atrocious. I really do. I, I mean, we've known all along that, you know, the costs have been going up, and the premiums and everything, but I don't see, I'm sorry, I don't see how we can do this to our employees in one fell swoop. There's got to be some way to, you know, we may have to bite the bullet a little bit and take some of the cost, but I, to just raise it up that much is just beyond what the employees can take, I think. So, just my feelings. Thanks.
Mayor?
Councilmember Sherwood?
Mr. Brown, I totally agree with the Vice Mayor. And it almost didn't make sense, excuse me, didn't make sense with the increase based on the five-year comparison you gave, and, but then when the Vice Mayor made her comments, it just made it clear that this is something that, that's on our plate now. And with increasing medical costs, and I just, everything that's just taking place, not only in our city, but across the world, you have people getting older, you have people living more, living longer, of course, but it just, the stress alone incurred with what's taking place in this world can make somebody sick. And what's going to take place with this increase is something that just makes me sick, just like the Vice Mayor just commented on. So, I encourage, if there's anything we can do, I mean, to roll up our sleeves to make this happen, because these increases, I mean, it's absolutely incredible when you can't take care of yourself with something that was, that you work long and hard for. That was just a comment.
Mr. Bauer?
Mayor and members of the council, I want to add one piece to this, if I might. The Arizona State Retirement System has a health plan also. What is happening here is not uncommon, and many people will choose to leave the system that is, that is managed by the city, and go to ASRS, and choose from a number of plans that they have, which might actually be cheaper because of the size of the pool in a retiree system. So, that's something to keep in mind. It doesn't, it is not uncommon for the current employees' concern for subsidizing retired employees, creates a restructuring of the fee, and for myself personally, it moved me into the ASRS insurance, and many other people. This is not an uncommon move, even though it's fairly abrupt and very large. I understand the concern for that. But I want you to know they, there are options.
Mayor? Councilmember?
Mr. Brown, how do we compare with other cities in that ratio, retirees and employees?
Mayor, Councilmember Martinez, as far as where we compare, there are some cities who have discontinued the retiree healthcare plan, others who continue to have that. As far as the benchmark cities, I'm not sure what they're going to be doing as they go forward into the new fiscal year. I can tell you that with our existing premiums, we've been in the top three of our benchmark cities in terms of the cost of medical care for our participants. So, we've been, we've been significantly high in terms of, I don't want to say in terms of premiums, premiums have been significantly low in comparison to the other benchmark cities.
Okay. So, with the new plan you're going to come in, you think it'll bring us closer to what other cities are doing?
Yes, we do have some benchmark information that came out recently on our, the cities that we compare ourselves to. And, you know, this will, this will put us somewhere in the middle as we, as we make these premium changes going into the new year.
Thank you.
Is there, is there any projections or any thought as far as the Obamacare, if that's, I shouldn't say if, when in fact it's really pushed through, how that's going to affect rates? Is it going to be dramatically higher, lower, the same? Does anybody actually know right now?
Mayor, what we do know right now is that, well, let me back up. As of March, March of 2010, this is when the Affordable Healthcare Act was initially passed, our plan was not subject to all of the requirements of the Affordable Healthcare Act because it was already in place. We have what is considered now a grandfathered plan, not subject to all the requirements and compliance regulations of Affordable Healthcare Act. That being said, beginning January, sorry, beginning July 1 of this year, there will be, through the Affordable Healthcare Act, there will be a $1 per participant annual fee that will be assessed, and we will be responsible for that. And that fee goes for research, some sort of research through the Affordable Healthcare Act. And then, another piece that will impact us, as of January 1, 2014, there will be a $5.25 fee for Affordable Healthcare Act that will be placed on each participant in the plan. So, beginning January 1, I have a family of five. For me and my family, that would be approximately $26 a month. It would be assessed to me through the Affordable Healthcare Act that would have to go to the federal government. That doesn't go to Blue Cross, it doesn't go to the city. It goes to cover the costs of the change.
You didn't actually answer my question. So, because we're sort of grandfathered in, and we have our rates, and you're calling it affordable healthcare, this doesn't look very affordable to most people with these rates that are more likely going to have to happen. Not because we did anything wrong, it's because we didn't act sooner and incrementalize, bring them up slowly. So, it's kind of a major, major shock, right? It's like jumping into cold water, you know, it's pretty amazing. Again, the Obamacare, would that be cheaper for similar insurance than what we are paying here, or do you know?
Mayor, for similar insurance, that will, that will not be cheaper. One of the things that we'll have to look at is the plan structures, maybe more high-deductible type plans, different types of plans. We're going to have to look at all of that because the Affordable Healthcare Act will impact the sustainability of a plan like this. And what that will be, I, you know, we'll have to work through that as we get into the summer.
And higher deductible might be an answer for some of these high premiums when you're talking $300, $400 increase per month. A higher premium deductible might make the difference as far as whether people can afford it or not.
Mayor, absolutely, and that's an option we need to look at as we go into the summer. And I would like to show you the slide of what the premiums, if retirees were just brought to the employee premiums, this next slide reflects what that would look like. And that is very significant, Mayor, to your point, and these are monthly charges. Now, Mr. Bauer had mentioned ASRS. Certainly, ASRS is an option for retirees. Currently, for those under 65, ASRS has a higher rate than what we would here. But for those over 65, who are on Medicare A and B, the rate is significantly less. So, it's more affordable for those that would be over 65. But again, this is just reflecting bringing the premiums to a standard employee rate, this would be the impact on our retirees. And as you can see, we've, you know, we've got over 500 retirees right now that we have on our plan, and we've got about 57 of those retirees who are on the family plan, and about 303 that are on just the retiree individual plan. So, you can see what the impacts would be as, as we look at these premiums. Another important note on this is that retirees who are on a city plan, as long as that city plan is not subsidized, they do receive a subsidy from ASRS of up to $260 a month. So, that's, you know, that is some relief. However, again, the increases, as you can see, are still very significant.
I could point out one thing that Councilmember Martinez is already doing, he just refuses to retire, so he doesn't have to pay the higher premiums.
They become sooner than you think.
Well, Mayor and Council, this is essentially, as we move forward and as we bring to you the Blue Cross Extension Agreement, which we'll bring to you Tuesday night, this gives you some information in terms of where our rates need to go in order to sustain the plan. And that's all I'm presenting to you is, based on the actuaries, based on two very high claims year, we're in one high claims year right now. Going into the next year, in order to sustain this plan, these are the rates that would need to be paid. And again, it's, you know, it's going to be something that, as a city, we will have to look at very hard over the summer and determine what the best options are as we go into fiscal year 15.
Vice Mayor?
And I understand better than most what's going on, but I guess my, I just still feel that our lack of, you know, urgency in the last few years should not fall on the employees' backs. I remember when I started six years ago, and Ms. Carmichael and Ms. Lupi Sierra sat down with me, I was astounded at how little the employees paid. I mean, in the corporate world, it doesn't work like that, and out in the real world, I'll say. So, I was astounded that we paid so little. So, I guess I should have, six years ago, started beating the drum then, because we probably wouldn't have been in this situation. So, I understand, you know, where we're at, but like I said, to just, all of a sudden, a 33% increase in this to the employees, if the retirees have an option, as you say, though, if it's higher, that's not, that's not an option to them with a, you know, with the retirement system, but I just, and I guess my question was, too, is money, if I'm not mistaken, money was moved out of the employee benefits fund over into the general fund at some point.
That's correct, and Ms. Sherhammer could probably speak to that, but just real quick, what we're talking about isn't necessarily impacting the contingency fund in the benefits plan. We're talking about sustaining it year to year to year, based on claims going out, revenues coming in.
And I understand that, but to gradual, gradually move to this point, instead of just, you know, dropping the hammer right now and just saying, you're going to pay 33% more.
Ms. Sherwood?
Mayor, Vice Mayor Knack, employee benefits, employee benefits fund reserve money was not, was not moved into the general fund. What council approved back in, it was either 2007 or 2008, was that the difference between what we should have been charging, employees and retirees for premiums, and what we were seeing in claims levels, that difference was covered by the employee benefits fund at a level of about $1 million per year. Now, that was taken to council as a supplemental request and was approved. So...
No, I agree. I remember that. It's just there again. You know, we should have been smarter about what we were doing, so...
Right, and I'm not aware of any use of that employee benefits fund for any general fund balancing issues. I, off the top of my head, I am not aware of anything.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we move on to near the end of the presentation. There are a couple other supplementals in your books on the page numbers that are noted that are not in the general fund and not in HERF. They're relatively minor. The general services, what we call general services is essentially our shop, the vehicle repair and maintenance shop. It includes fuel purchases. In this case, we're recommending that $500,000 in additional appropriation be provided for that fund to offset any potential increases in fuel prices. I know in the past, we've usually seen prices spike in the spring, and then they drop a little later. We really never know where they're going to go, but clearly, they haven't gone down very much. So, the additional costs then would be charged back to the users, which is across all funds. It includes the enterprise funds, the sales tax funds, the general fund, et cetera. Camelback Ranch Operations, there's a small increase that we're recommending there to cover landscape maintenance costs. And in the Park Self-Sustaining, it's called self-sustaining, it's a separate fund, it's essentially special interest classes, the revenue that comes from those. Most of those special interest classes are taught by temporary labor. So, this is just to, an adjustment to accommodate some, some cost increases related to temporary labor. And then we have a couple carryover requests. One is related to the public safety training facility, and it's a carryover request to be used for some unexpected facility repairs related to some equipment that they have there, I believe in the Health Center. And in transportation grants, as you've, we've seen over the years, oftentimes, grant cycles work on a different cycle than our fiscal year. So, we may be awarded grant money late in a fiscal year, so we have to carry over that, carry it over to finish it in the following year, and that's the case here with some bus-related grants that will continue into 14. With that, it takes us to the budget adoption calendar. This is the same one I showed you in, sometime in March. Bottom line here is...
Hold on. Excuse me, before we get on the calendar, Ms. Sherhammer, on our workshop council report that was presented earlier to us, on the police and fire supplements, in the, and I should have pointed this out before the meeting, but I see the police supplement on page three, page 361. I don't see fire. The recommendation is to not, to not fund those supplements. I think the police came to $337,000. I don't see where fire is. You mentioned fire, and the, fire is mentioned in the write-up.
Mayor, excuse me.
Can you talk to that?
Mayor and Councilmember Sherwood, if I may, there was a last-minute addition to the slide presentation, and it actually was sent separately from the file we're looking at. If we could have a couple minutes, we can pull up the, what you're talking about.
Hey, did that cover that?
Yes.
I think it's a question. Do you need to see if it's got it covered?
Well, I mean, I think we need to have the discussion.
Absolutely.
The recommendation is, is not to fund that for 2014.
If I may, we'll just pull up the slide. Mayor, Council, if I may, this addresses Councilmember Sherwood's question. Originally, when we started this budget process several months ago, the police department had submitted for the general fund about $765,000 in supplemental requests for the general fund. And the fire department had submitted supplemental requests for the general fund of about $2.6 million. Now, those are the only two departments that submitted supplemental requests, other than the electricity and the water that we talked about earlier, from Public Works and Parks. We did not allow any other general fund departments to submit supplementals, even though we knew there were needs out there. And we did not allow them to do it because we didn't have the funding to cover any of it. What we covered in the council communication is that these general fund supplementals for police and fire are not recommended to be funded because currently, those departments are accredited, and the accreditation signifies that they meet some national standards. And given our revenue and expenditure situation and the fact that we're still going to draw it on the fund balance by 3.4 million next year, we are recommending that these police and fire supplementals not be funded.
What is the one supplement, though, that is shown for fire that totals $337K? Oh, never mind, that's, you spoke of that earlier. That's on the school resource officers. Yeah.
Oh, yes, that's a police sales tax fund.
Of which we're getting recovery, some recovery in.
So if that addresses your question, then I can move on to the calendar.
Oh, yeah. Councilmember Shavira.
In regards to that, Mrs. Scherhammer, and Mr. Bowers, if you'd like, if you can chime in on this one also. When we were looking at the supplementals, excuse me, and I know that the mayor brought up earlier, just the awful tragedy that just happened in, in Boston. And the thing about that is, is it is just so senseless. And we had many people hurt, and, and I forget what the number is now that people have died. But in that, you had spectators, you had employees that were not sworn, and you had sworn that were hurt in that incident. And if you go back far further in the past couple weeks, you've had firefighters that were held hostage, police officers being hurt at a rate that I just, I just can't imagine. And we're in a city with an entertainment district that, good for us that, you know, we're getting the Super Bowl, and we're going to be getting a lot more attention paid to our wonderful city, which we need to have. But the thing is, is that I know at one time, it was brought up about, I think it was roughly 800, excuse me, $850,000 to staff a truck that we were going to lease with 15 firefighters. Ms. Scherhammer and Mr. Bowers, you know that we are in extreme need, and, and just to quote the mayor, things just aren't getting safer anymore. And it's our responsibility, not only to protect our citizens, but our employees and people that come to our fair city. And this is something that I really want to pay a lot of attention to. I mean, this is something that isn't going to put us over the mark, but bring us up just to a mark to, to protect our city. And I would love to see what we can do, if we can staff that truck that we are going to lease with those 15 firefighters, but also pay extra attention to what our police officers need, especially when it was brought up earlier about the, our needs with the Super Bowl. So I would love comments from the floor.
Allow me. Mayor, members of the council, Councilman Shavira, this was taken very seriously by us in, in an exceptionally difficult financial situation. I have the highest regard for both police and fire, for the chiefs that guide them, and am impressed that in difficult times, they got their accreditation and that symbol of, of capacity. And looking at both the dollars involved in this and the ongoing costs vis-à-vis our attempt to balance out the system and to have an increase steadily in the, in the, in the ending balance, it was, it was a recommendation that we make based on, on all those factors, with a weight given to, to how capable they are and how impressive it is that they are, in fact, accredited, which is a symbol of their capacity to provide the services within the community they're in. Will this make it more difficult? Yes. The option, of course, is to take something else out of the budget, which, of course, would have its own painful results. Putting that on the balanced scale, we make this recommendation and fully understand that you may see it differently.
Mayor, I'd like to call Chief Burdick to the podium, please.
That's fine. Chief Burdick?
In light of what you just heard right now, chief, and I know that you and Chief Black are working very, very hard to make do with what you have. And I'm going to ask you this question. Is it possible, I know that Mr. Bowers just indicated, you know, we are in hard times, and, but to bring up the staffing that we need and develop the public safety criteria that we have to have in order to serve our citizens and our employees, is it possible? Can we, is there, is there a way? Have you been working on something to make this happen?
Mayor, Councilmember Shavira, the short answer is yes. I mean, we're always exploring and looking for ways to make it happen. We're exploring a number of opportunities. I absolutely understand the financial situation in the city. That's apparent, especially during today's presentation. We see where we're at. Short answer is, we're doing what we have to do, and we're doing what we can to cover the, the needs from our, from the fire department perspective. I guess if I'm, if you could, I'd just look at it more specifically. Are you looking specifically at, at what area, what aspect?
For the 15 bodies. The 15 bodies just after the lease truck.
Mayor, Councilmember Shavira, one of the things I spoke with Mr. Bowers about was that, you know, in the supplemental request, it is, it's a $1.5 million ongoing cost for those 15 bodies. One of the things that we looked at was, obviously, we have no, you know, we don't even have a list available right now. We would have to recruit and retain, or recruit test and, and hire those, those folks. That's going to take us six months of the year. So going into next fiscal year, what we looked at was, to be creative, is it would only have that cost. So it would reduce that cost down to around $750,000 of ongoing. Again, you mentioned the truck. Originally, when we submitted our supplementals, it was about a $650,000 cost. We looked at a lease purchase option that brings that down to around $69,000 of, over a 10-year period. So we are looking at ways to, to lessen that impact and obviously be as creative as we can, knowing, knowing that anything we do is going to have that, as Mr. Bowers mentioned, that, that counter effect. It's kind of a, the old yin and yang thing. Whatever we do over here to, to support us, I know there's going to be a, a cost on the other side. Have we explored every option? We've explored a great deal of them. We continue to look at things and, and continue to look at ways we could stair-step this in, knowing exactly the, the situation we're in.
Chief, in reference to the accreditation, are we currently meeting the national standard right now?
Mayor, Councilman Shavira, the national standard is, is based on National Fire Protection Association, FPA 7010, which is four minutes of travel time, one minute of turnout time, which is to get on the truck, five minutes. No, we are not meeting that standard. Accreditation, what it allows is it understands that, same situation Glendale's in, it makes allowances for that and says, okay, organizations might have stress at times, so we'll give you a 30% margin. So they say, basically, take that five minutes, 30, 30% of that is another minute and a half, so six and a half minutes. If you're within that, you're within that standard. We're currently at 6 minutes, 52 seconds, so we're not making accreditation standards. I think to Ms. Scherhammer's point about us being accredited, yes, we are. We send in annual compliance reports. They look at that, and they certainly will this year when we submit the report and we say we're not meeting their standard, they're going to probably tell us, you know, what are you doing? They're going to ask for, you know, what, what efforts are we making? And then, and then it moves forward from there.
Thank you, chief.
Councilmember Martinez.
Thank, I don't have a question, Mr. Kamal. Thank you, Mayor. You know, all through the years that I've been in the council, I've been a strong supporter of police and fire. The council, the whole council has, and I continue to be and will, to be a strong supporter. But as was explained, Mr. Bowers, very well, I think, at this time, I just don't see how we could, you know, have any supplementals. It pains me to say that, but the money just isn't there. You know, if, if it were there, I, that was, hesitate to say, let's do it. Or if we could identify what we could do without, because, you know, do we, reduce the libraries further? I mean, where would it come from? It would be painful somewhere else. And I think that, you know, as, as things get better, and hopefully by next year, the next funding cycle, that's, in my mind, that would, that would be a priority still, the police and fire. And do whatever we can to bring that up, to be sure that response times and, you know, the safety of our citizens are, you know, a first priority. Those are my comments, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Alvarez.
I'm glad to hear that we're thinking of the taxpayers, the citizens of the city of Glendale. I think the average person out there is going to be shocked because we read in the paper that we give, we spend $6 million to fix the area for a car dealership, and we forgive the sales tax in the amount apparently of $10 million. We should be, we can't not give that money up, but we have. And then we have supplemental, which is not that much, to a business that doesn't bring us anything, which is Camelback Ranch, that we gave for a dollar a year for each team. That doesn't seem to me like we were thinking of our residents. Police and fire, as the mayor mentioned, are very important, especially in this time. And I know, I understand, Mr. Bowers, he's only, he's looking at reality. But in the past, we were more like a fantasy land. And to say that the economics, you know, we didn't get enough money from the state, didn't stop us from spending, and we continue. This is just recent with the car dealership. And it doesn't seem to faze us that we're going to be charging more for insurance, something that the vice mayor brought up. Why didn't we do it before? Well, because we were too busy thinking of the sports and the glory that it was going to give us, which at the end, it brought us nothing. And now who has to pay for it? The constituent. So, and I know they're not, you know, I'm a nobody in this council. I've never been, you know, recognized or listened to because I don't know what I'm talking about. But, you know, deep down, all of you know that we screwed up, and we cannot continue. We haven't learned anything when we recently are going to give up $10 million to a car dealership. And don't take this like it's not going to happen in Glendale. It happened in Boston. We've got Lukefield that is right there that terrorists would like to get to, and I, and we welcome Lukefield. They're also here to protect us. But we've got a lot of things. We've got a power plant that's close, that, that terrorists could attack, and we're not going to be prepared. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Kamal, Mayor.
Vice Mayor, next.
Actually, I was wondering if someone could address the car dealership and kind of talk about that a little bit. Mr. Bauer, please, talk about the, the car dealership.
Mayor, members of the council, Vice Mayor, the, the, the car dealership being referred to in, is the recently opened or groundbreaking ceremony that we had for the lawn Cadillac Car Dealership on Belle Road. This is, this is an agreement that has been in place. There's an agreement that was in place for over 10 years that, that basically has structured, at the time, structured an incentive program to give back over 50% of the general fund sales tax over 10 years, I think, with, with some specific minimum numbers, which is the $10 million minimum number to be achieved over that time period. But this is a, this is a, an agreement that was in place for well over 10 years that is now being honored because the, the change in times and the, the fact that it's now been open. However, it, it does require that the general fund sales tax, the portion of the general fund sales tax collected be shared at least at the 50% level for the first couple, three or four years, and then be adjusted to meet the minimum requirements for the agreement, even if it's less than the 50% or more than the 50%.
Ms. Ruske, Mayor. Do we foresee a loss on this deal or a gain on this deal?
Vice, Vice Mayor Kanak, the, the fact that there's 50, there's a, first of all, the public safety sales tax and the transportation sales tax is not shared. So those sales tax, to the tune of the first $5,000, so because of the, the structuring of the sales tax that we have recently done, and the general fund sales tax will be shared 50% initially, and then, like, the projections are that at the end of, I think it's 10 years or so, we, we, we would have to meet that $10 million number. If that, if that single car dealership stays as the only option there on that site, which was originally planned for, for three luxury car dealers, it is possible that we would lose money on that, on that whole transaction. However, if they are successful in bringing the other two car dealers there, we think that with the other two car dealers, over the time period that we have to work with, it would be... it would be a positive effect for the city. But again, when the first deal was structured, it was structured for three dealers, three luxury car dealers, and today we only have one. However, the rebate and incentive is applied to that one. So there's a possibility that we could break even or even possibly be costly to us from the percentage of the general fund sales tax. The positive is that any transportation or public safety sales tax will be, would be deposited with the city.
So the agreement is legally binding on us?
Vice Mayor, cannot, yes.
Yes. And maybe Mr. Van Tyel will, in his entrepreneurial personality that he has, when we met him, you can tell that he's a, he wants to do more, not less, so hopefully he will get a couple more dealerships or expand himself there. So the, we just don't know the future, but I guess the main thing is, we're hopeful that the economy will recover, it will be expanded, but we have a legally binding agreement that we have to, you know, uphold.
Vice Mayor, cannot, that is correct. However, Mr. Van Tyel, who is owner and manager of the Cadillac dealer, does not currently own the remainder of the property, that is still, that the rest of the property is still with the land.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Martinez.
Mr. Schieck, you know, now that Cadillac is coming in there, and it's, I think it's recognized as the premier luxury brand in America, it was appear to me that it'll be a lot easier to perhaps get those other two dealers in at that location.
Council, Mayor, Councilmember Martinez, nothing brings more success than the sight of people investing, and, you know, that we're hoping that would be the catalyst to bring the other two dealers that is needed for that site.
And it brings, I think, it's bringing up 150 jobs, as I recall?
That's the numbers projected by, and provided to us by the company, yes.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Councilmember Alvarez.
I guess, I think of the present. We are thinking of the future and a promise and a hope. We went through the same thing with Camelback Ranch, we were going to have all this development and so forth. I think the perfect example is the businesses in downtown Glendale. We don't provide millions for them to have a better business, but we do, we're in this kick about sports and money and hopes. I want to deal with the present and with reality. I can support a property tax if, if we thought of maybe the employee that doesn't get paid very much would get a pay increase. That would make it, to me, like, you're really investing in our workers, our employees, and not just investing in, in putting, I, nothing assures me that that money is going to, is not going to be placed in some other dream or hope. So I understand about the dealership and an agreement, which was a bad agreement to start, we've done bad agreements, and we can't deny that. But the ones that are suffering, first of all, the people that we provide jobs to, and the community that we deny services to, and that's the only way that I would even support a property tax, if we got just a little bit for the employees, not the ones that are getting, you know, and excuse me if I offend anybody, that's getting 100,000, 130,000 or more. I'm thinking of the employee that's out there doing the hard jobs and gets paid very little. Now, that's my opinion, and, but it is also the feeling out there. Your property tax will go up, but then they read in the paper how we're dreaming again, and I can't go by anybody's spunk or, you know, personality. We need the money. How they are personally is not of any concern of mine. I just would not approve of a budget that would deny services in an emergency. Thank you.
Mayor.
Councilmember Sherwood.
A couple of comments and some questions and suggestions. Mr. Bauer, I like what we've, I like what you've attempted, what we've attempted to do with the revised balancing of trying to build our contingency up slowly. I don't, I don't know how much of that that we can afford upfront, but it's, it's a nice transaction, you know, starting off at 5% and trying to end up around 12% under some challenging times. The concern I have with the public safety, though, is, and again, we tend, rightfully so, to protect them, because that's one of the state mandated, along with public, along with the public utilities, that's what we're charged with, everything else is a plus. But I think we need to go back and, I mean, on the fire side, we didn't get to hear from PD, but on the fire side, it seems like they're close to losing their accreditation. I mean, if we're over the threshold now, that when they submit their reports for the coming year, that may be in danger, and I don't know what that does to insurance funds or, but, you know, I mean, that would be a bit of a black eye for us. This 3.4 million combined that was requested in supplemental, and I think part of that is sustaining, so I think you carry that out over the years, certainly digs into our contingency, but maybe there's, maybe we need just another session just to discuss those changes to see what more we can do with it, cut it down, see what it actually does, I mean, and also the proportion of fire over police. I mean, generally, the way the public safety funds are laid out, it's a two-thirds to one-third. Fire is asking for the brunt of this money. I know both departments are hurting. I just think we need some further discussion on it before we come close to finalizing some of these numbers here, and whether it's just an extra workshop with a little bit more detailed presentation from those groups. I just don't feel comfortable right now, and I understand what you were trying to do with this. We are accredited, let's, let's see where we stand next year before beefing it up. I'd like to go back and just look at a little bit more detail, see, you know, maybe it's partial, maybe they fully need to be funded, what they're asking for, but see what the results are. What is the cost of losing accreditation? What's the chance of losing accreditation? What other things does Chief have up his sleeve to alleviate the problem? I think that's what Councilman Shavera was trying to get to. So I'm just not, I wouldn't be ready to sign off on this yet, not that we're being asked to today, but I think we need just a, another discussion on it with just a little bit more detail. Thank you.
Yes, I have a comment, Mayor. As I said, you know, in the information that we received today, more than once I saw that the phrase used, that we don't have a sustainable budget. It's, we have a structural deficit. I mean, it's, it's not something I think that we can give a quick fix to. And again, you know, if we were to have another discussion, I think you'd have to come back and say, where, if it's 100, 150 billion dollars, where's that coming from? And I don't see where we have that in the budget anywhere. So I don't think we need another discussion. I think we need to go with what the staff has presented. In fact, at the outset, I neglected to say, my oversight, that I wanted to commend the staff, city manager, assistant city manager, everyone that's worked on this budget, because I think they've brought forward an excellent, an excellent presentation. It makes sense, taking everything into consideration, that makes sense. Yes, there's a pain, but I think it's spread throughout. I don't think we're in a point where it's, you know, our citizens are in danger, yes, response times are not what they should be. But I know the chief was, you know, is sweating lightly because he's caught right in the middle here, but I heard him, did hear him say the last time that, you know, they were doing the best they can with what they have, even if they had the money, they couldn't fill those positions, it'd take a long time. So again, I go back, that we go ahead with the proposed budget, and that as soon as things get better, certainly that would be our first priority. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Shavera.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, excuse me, I agree with Councilmember Sherwood, and, but also, I have a question for Mrs. Sherhammer. Mrs. Sherhammer, how many vacancies, fully funded vacancies, do we have for next year? Not including public safety, just fully funded vacancies for next year?
Mayor, Councilmember Shavera, we budget all authorized positions, whether they're vacant or not. Right now, the budget for next year includes the elimination of 80 FTEs that are vacant. Now, that does include some of those unfunded FTEs that were sworn positions in both the general fund and the public safety sales tax, this is a holdover from a few years ago. But all vacancies, other vacancies are being eliminated out of the general fund already. Both police and fire have reallocated some of the salary money originally allocated for people to their non-salary side.
Not to cut you off, Mrs. Sherhammer, but I just ask, how many fully funded vacancies do we have next year excluding public safety? Just to that question.
Mayor, I can't answer the question, because I don't know what the number of vacancies are right now. And I can't predict for you what vacancies will be, what positions will be vacant on July 1 or December 31 of next fiscal year. I don't know.
Okay, but how about trying to give me the information of how many we have right now?
I don't know the answer to that either.
Can you try to get that?
If, if we could, through the chair, please.
I'm sorry, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mayor, Councilmember Shavera, we could check with Mr. Brown to see if he knows how many vacancies we have at the moment. I just don't know off the top of my head, but we can get it for you.
That sounds good, thank you.
Is Mr. Brown here? Do you happen to know that? Very good, thank you. Councilmember Martinez.
Yes, just one more comment. Mrs. Sherhammer, I think at the last budget presentation, correct me if I'm wrong, I think that you said that from the general fund, police and fire is, what, was it 63%? For police and fire and 34 out of the, for, out of the general fund total, somewhere along there?
Mayor, Councilmember Martinez, that's correct. In the general fund alone, over 60% of the ongoing funds are dedicated to only police and fire.
And how does that compare? Does anyone know how that compares with other cities? Are we at the same level? Are we over, are we under? Does anybody know?
Mayor, Councilmember Martinez, it's relatively comparable. It depends on what other cities have in their budget, what kind of makes up the total. But yes, it's, it is common to see over 50% of a general fund budget dedicated to police and fire.
But I would think that, maybe I'm wrong, but that we, we wouldn't be far below other cities. I mean, we're 60, whatever that percentage is, 60%, that we're not the only city that's at that figure, or maybe even a little higher, I don't know. Just a comment, Mayor, thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. And when you, all these slides, fire is the one that's in a deficit the whole time. It's like, so I think fire has to be addressed. All the other departments are not. Police gets into that in about the fourth year, but fire has just got a deficit the whole way, so I, like, what do we do? I mean, they start with a deficit, that's not a, you know, not good. So just a comment on theirs. I am in favor of increasing the primary property tax, I think we should have done that a long time ago. The contingency fund, I am pleased to see that it's a gradual build. I mean, if you can't pay your mortgage, you don't put money in savings. You've got to, you know, that's a balancing that needs to be done, you know, conservatively, so I'm glad to see that. Maybe, maybe not even as conservative as I'd like to see, I'd like to see actually maybe a little less, but, and also, I'm pleased that the fund balances are now being used in a prudent way, and, but being used, that's, I think that is a necessity. And I really appreciate, Mr. Bowers, what you've brought to this budget. I can see your hand in it, and I really do appreciate it. It is a balancing act, because at this point, who do we take from, you know, to give over here? It is definitely a balancing act. We don't want to hurt any department. You know, I don't want to hurt Parks and Rec, or libraries, or anybody, but I still think public safety is primary, and we need to keep our focus on that. And I just, I'm really hopeful that our revenues start increasing, that the economy starts improving, which I do believe it will, and that hopefully in a year or two, it won't look so dire. So, but I thank all the staff for all your hard work on this, it's, it's very, not easy, I know, for any of you, but I'm really concerned about the employees at this point with these healthcare benefits costs, so, thank you, Mayor.
I, obviously, I need to say something. You know, your, your message this morning is not doom and gloom as much as, as literally as it was three months ago. But what I heard three months ago is that they were going to lay janitors off and privatize that to try to save money, and the first thing that was said today is, we're not recommending any layoffs to anybody. That's pretty good news in itself. Myself and our acting city manager has had a couple of discussions already about a couple other things, thinking outside the box, ways to bring some money to the city, and I know that you're working on that, and I'm excited about that, because it's very possible that we may have something that could help other departments. But, you know, everybody here needs to be realistic, you know, we have a problem, we have to address it, and unless you're prepared to publicly say who you're willing to cut in order to support someone else, you know, we need, we need to try to be realistic about it. I'm very excited, the fact that we're not laying anybody off, I think that's huge. Obviously, I'd love to do what we can for public safety, any, any way that anybody can come up with any ideas that we can increase and try to cover those times that the fire department's concerned with. Obviously, I'm certainly game and willing to listen, but until, until you're publicly willing to say who you're willing to cut, I don't know what else we can do other than the recommendation at this point. And certainly, it's open for discussion, and I hope everybody takes this home and thinks about it diligently, really, really pays a lot of attention to the problems that we do have.
Mayor.
Thank you so far for, for the direction that you've gone. Obviously, we're not done yet, we have a ways to go.
Mayor, I, I really respect our city manager, our interim city manager, and I know he's trying to do everything. trying to do everything else that he can do, just like Mr. Skeet, Mr. Gensy. I really respect them, and I appreciate that they are really helping us out. I have a suggestion on your saying where we could cut. I've always said, we have so much in lawyer fees, maybe the, maybe we can cut that, you know, to not being, not calling so many attorneys on issues that we have, that we cannot do anything about. So that's my suggestion.
More in-house and less contract?
Yeah, and outside lawyers coming in to, in the amount of $5 million, just to fight issues that we have, that been really clear to the public as to why we're doing this. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Martinez.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. De Piazza, how many attorneys have we lost? How many staff have you lost there in the last few years, along with everybody else?
Mayor, Councilmember, four.
Four.
I withdraw that, five. And that's a city prosecutor's office and a city attorney's office.
And some of the issues that come up, especially, I guess, we've, you know, we're in a very litigious society, we're sued for all kinds of things, and for contracts that we enter into, we need to go out for consultants, because, I mean, this is a big city, and there's, we can't have an expert in every, I guess, issue that comes up, and so that's, I would assume that's why we go out for consultants. But we have a lot of contracts that come in. I've heard the number, I forget, but help me out here. How many contracts do we have presently, for example, that are being reviewed by your attorneys, and how long does it take to that? I know it's a very time-consuming process.
Mayor, Councilmember Martinez, I don't have an exact number of contracts. What I could tell you is that our charter provides that every contract entered into by the City of Glendale requires review and approval by the city attorney's office. Currently, we have six positions for attorneys on staff. What I could tell you is that currently, two of those positions are vacant. We have positions for four support staff in the city attorney's office, and one of those is vacant. We're working diligently to work through the shortfall of personnel. We're trying to do it in-house. One of the things that we've tried to do is, I recruited and hired an attorney who has a history of working for us, doing hearings, but also has a history of working for a firm that supports cities, does their outside counsel work at a favorable rate, and we're using that person exclusively to work through the backlog of contracts. And until we recruit a permanent individual, we hope to continue using that temporary fix. But we work through literally thousands of contracts throughout the year, and they're reviewed by six attorneys. To tell you how long it takes to review a contract, it's impossible to say. Some contracts are very lengthy and go through several iterations. Some of them are very brief, but even though they're brief, they require discussion, negotiation, research. And the practice has been to review those contracts in-house. Sometimes it's necessary to go to outside counsel or to a consultant if it's a highly technical matter, but by and large, the work is done in-house.
Thank you.
Follow-up to what your statement was, the backlog, are you making headway on that backlog?
Mayor, I believe we are. I'm getting feedback from the departments indicating a positive result, and I'm also watching the contracts very closely. We have a staff meeting now on a weekly basis so that we could track the contracts and their progress. Staff has been working very hard, and I think we're making good progress.
Very good, thank you. Councilmember Alvarez.
I must, I was probably misunderstood. I have no problem with the attorney's office and the work that they do. What I'm talking about is the consultants that we hire for other cases that we can't do anything about. It's very clear, it's a no-brainer. The attorney's office does their job, you need more attorneys. I'm talking about the consultant fees that have now reached close to $5 million for one case. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Who said that? Yes.
If I may, I just wanted to clarify something. Currently, in the city attorney's office budget, there's $500,000 on an ongoing basis that's set aside for outside legal fees. Now, Councilmember Alvarez is absolutely correct that in prior years, we spent several million dollars on outside legal fees. The amounts that were above the $500,000 that was budgeted were covered by essentially general fund fund balance.
Vice Mayor.
And I was going to ask, kind of where you were going, but right now, do we have any outside attorneys on, you know, retaining anybody at all from the past, or would we just go out new now if we needed to get legal advice from the outside?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, we do currently use outside counsel for a number of items right now, and will probably continue to do so in the foreseeable future. We go to outside counsel for two reasons. Number one, if there's a case that involves the need for particular expertise which is not resident in our office. One case comes to mind, insurance. Insurance is a highly technical area of the law, and we don't have a resident capability in insurance law. We have retained outside counsel to help us recover money from insurance companies that have denied us coverage. And as a matter of fact, recently, we've had a very successful outcome in a motion for summary judgment. We're going to have to continue in cases where there's this need for specific expertise. The second reason we go to outside counsel is resource management. We have a very lean office. We have positions, including a city attorney, for six attorneys. There's a lot of work that's spread among the six attorneys. We can't afford to be a one-case attorney office. If there's a case that requires a huge amount of time, we have to go to outside counsel because we can't afford to dedicate one or two of our attorneys to a single case. So those are the two reasons we go to outside counsel, and as long as we maintain an office as lean as our office is, we probably will have to continue to go to outside counsel. Mayor, Vice Mayor, if I could make one other point. If you take a look at the cost of inside attorneys in the City of Glendale, if you consider the highest paid attorney, and consider salary and also benefits that go to that position right now, you're probably only talking about, all told, just over $100 an hour. If you went to outside counsel, I could tell you that the lowest paid outside counsel that we use right now, charge is just under $200 an hour. And that's a relatively low fee in this city for legal services. What I could tell you is that when you reach those niche areas of the law, the hourly rates are considerably higher. So we try to do as much as we can in-house to keep the costs down, but occasionally, it's absolutely necessary to go to outside counsel. And all the other points that were made today are certainly well-taken, and efforts are being made to control the costs as best we can. Thank you, Mayor.
Back to the budget adoption calendar.
This is a slide I've shown you before. The two most important things to note on this slide are, we plan to deliver to you the tentative budget on May 17. It will be the budget schedules, just like we did a year ago, because we don't have enough time to get all the writing done for the tentative, but we will for the final. Then on May 28, it's an evening meeting for council, a voting meeting, and at that time, we would present a resolution that, for council to adopt regarding the 14 tentative budget. At the time, we would also give notice for the dates of public hearings regarding the budget adoption and property tax. Actually, it would be three public hearings, I forgot to update this slide. It'll be a total of three public hearings, and I'll talk about them more on the next slide. And then we also have to publish in the newspaper a variety of budget schedules. This is all by state statute. Now, if we go to the next budget calendar slide, we would publish a couple notices in the newspaper regarding public hearings and the budget schedules. Then on June 11, we would have three separate and distinct public hearings. One is truth and taxation, and that's because of the primary property tax levy change. Second would be for the property tax levy itself. It is separate from truth and taxation. And then the third would be for the budget adoption. With that third public hearing, then council would adopt the final budget. The final budget book, we would have ready sometime in July, once we can get all the writing done. June 25, we come back, because by state law, council, there must be at least two weeks between the adoption of the final budget and the adoption of the property tax levy. So we come back at the last evening meeting in June for council to adopt the ordinance on the property tax levy. And then we start all over again on July 1. And that actually brings us to the end of the council meeting, or, excuse me, the presentation.
Thank you, Mrs. Hammer. Moving on to our next item, city manager's report. Mr. Bowers, anything additional you'd like to report?
No, Your Honor, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is council items of special interest. Each council member will have the opportunity to indicate topics that they'd like to have discussed by the council at a future workshop. We'll start with Councilmember Sherwood.
Nothing.
Councilmember Alvarez.
I have, in the past, requested that we meet with the Tohono'ou'ou' nation and get some comments from them, and here's some comments that they've made that the council has not heard, I guess. They've still insisted it's going to be expensive for the city, and anyway, I just think that we should know the truth, and we should let our constituents know the truth. But I have not been, I have not heard anything about having a meeting with them, so I'm just trying to get the public to know what's going on, why aren't we moving on, making a decision if we're going to continue with the lawsuit, or are we going to continue, are we going to continue spending more money, you know, with lawyer fees and not listening to changes that have been made, or maybe I don't know something that I need to, I need to be told. But I don't, and if you're not going to have it, I just want you to let me know, and not just prolong it so I can be requesting every day, every council workshop. Thank you.
Councilmember Martinez.
Question for Mr. De Piazza. Would it have to have direction from council in order to have a meeting with Tohono'ou'ou?
If council wishes to have a meeting, there should be consensus, and if consensus is reached, then a meeting can be scheduled or requested.
Okay. Of course, and I'm not for it, but I wanted to ask the question. And to date, there has been no direction given to meet with them, and it's in litigation, and I don't see how we could even meet with them if we wanted to.
And obviously, any council member here is certainly welcome to meet with the TOs on their own time, and I've certainly made that offer. I would meet with Chairman Norris or his folks at any time that they'd like to come visit, so I've made that public.
Just one comment, very early on, I did meet with Chairman Norris, Vice Mayor Freid at the time, and I met with Chairman Norris and some of his council members, and we both made it very clear where we, you know, where we stood, and what we're willing to give and not to give. So from my viewpoint, it's pointless to meet with them, you know, nothing has changed.
If we could actually go back to the opportunity to indicate topics that you would like to have discussed at the council, so we'll go to Councilmember Hugh next.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, maybe the manager could give us a report on the benefits of either pursuing the lawsuit or just removing our name from the lawsuit. I think that's kind of what Councilmember Alvarez is talking about, by continuing expending money on lawsuits and outside attorneys and consultants. Thank you.
Councilmember Shavera.
I agree with Councilmember Hugh, and other than that, I have no other comments.
Vice Mayor?
Nothing, thank you, Mayor.
Hey, seeing that was the last item of our agenda, I have nothing I'd like to add to that. I'd like to thank everyone for attending this workshop that was supposed to go on till 4 o'clock today, so I guess we did okay. With that, we do have an executive session that will commence in B3 downstairs. We'll reconvene at 12:00 a.m. With that, we're adjourned.